Ask the council members to please take their seats. Ms. Whitby, would you call roll? And I understand Mr. Alderman Berry is ill and won't be here.
Gibson?
Present.
Yildin?
Here.
Dobins?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Vestal?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can I ask that we stand for the prayer to be followed by the pledge of Alderman Vestal? Can I ask us to please bow our head? Dear Father, as we are facing new challenges in our country, please give those of us in leadership, certainly the President and the Congress and the Cabinet, the state leadership, the Governor and the officials that work for the state, and give all of us, those of us in local government, as we've seen over the last several weeks, the responses to events which are taking place in New York fall upon the local leadership. And God, we pray to you that an event like that will never happen again in this country. But we also ask for your guidance and wisdom in charting a path that we can help the world become a safer place. Please give us your understanding, your wisdom, your knowledge, and certainly of all your love, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Gibson moves. And Alderman Witcher seconds approval of amendments of the previous meeting. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And now on communications, I think we only have two. Is there any... One... Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't we just read by title Communication Number One and by title Communication Number Two. We'll just do them separately.
Okay. Number one is a memo from Captain Malden from the Fire Department to the Mayor and the City Council regarding the upcoming Citizens' Fire Academy, which will start this Thursday.
Will we accept and file?
Motion made and seconded, they'll be accepted and filed. Now, let me repeat that again, that the Citizens' Fire Academy that will be starting on September 27, 2001, and ending on November 15, 2001. Chief, is there still opportunities for anyone to be a part of that, or is that class full?
We're taking applications. It starts Thursday night, and we're taking applications on it, and they can come to the class, and we'll look at their applications at that time. Mayor, while we got you here, I'd like to recognize some of our people here from the Citizens' Fire Academy, and thanks for the announcement tonight.
Not at all. We recognize some of the faces in the audience. In fact, you know, we've had a chance to have them come to their graduation, if I remember right, up at the Lakewood Fire Station. And I know as we look to our Fire Department, as well as our Police Department, our citizen involvement is absolutely critical, and we certainly appreciate your graduates and look forward to a new class beginning this week. And we encourage anyone that may be interested in being a part of that to contact...
Call the main office.
Contact the main office at the Fire Department and ask for Captain Malden. Did I get a vote on that acceptance file?
No, sir.
On the motion to accept and file?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Communication number two is a letter from Donnie Cook, City President of Bank of America, regarding $10 million, City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, Short Term Financing Obligations, Series 2001.
Will we accept and file?
Accept and file. And note that we probably will have a special call meeting during the week that begins October 1.
Correct. So, any of... If more than four of you intend to go down to town, please let us know, so we can adjust. But you're likely to get a special call meeting on or about the first week of October.
I know I'll be gone Tuesday now. We traditionally don't have one on Wednesday. Thursday's open for me.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
It's all of the communications.
Let me... Before we go on, let me ask Chief Vaughn and Captain Pounder. Phil, you want to come up? Let me present this to both of you, and I know nationally we're going to be a part of a recognition of Fire Prevention Week. And I want to, again, thank the Fire Department, certainly the effort that's going on now as we go out into our neighborhoods and do our inspections and providing smoke alarms and batteries. I think that's a very positive step, and in my mind, certainly, it will save lives. Now, whereas cooking, heating, and electrical fires represent three of the nation's leading causes of home fires and are collectively responsible for nearly half of all home fires and one-third of all associated fire deaths, and whereas the vast majority of home cooking, heating, and electrical fires can be prevented by taking simple safety precautions, whereas developing a home fire escape plan and practicing it at least twice a year is critical to escaping a fire safely, and whereas proper installation, testing, and maintenance of smoke alarms are part of a thorough home fire escape plan, and whereas by preventing the leading causes of home fires and by developing and practicing a thorough escape plan, people can greatly reduce their risk to fire. Whereas Fire Prevention Week 2001's theme, Cover the Bases and Strike Out Fire, teaches the public how to prevent cooking, heating, and electrical fires and encourages people to develop a home fire escape plan that includes working smoking alarms, and whereas the Fire Service of North Little Rock is dedicated to the safety of life and property from the devastating effects of fire, and whereas the members of the Fire Service are joined by other concerned citizens of North Little Rock, as well as other emergency service providers and safety advocates, businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in their fire safety efforts. Whereas the week of October 7 through 13, 2001, marks the commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, which killed more than 250 persons, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 buildings. Now, therefore, I, Patrick Hayes, Mayor of North Little Rock, do proclaim the week of October 7 through 13 as Fire Prevention Week and urge all of the citizens of our community to participate in fire prevention activities at home, work, and school, and to take the steps needed to make their homes and families safe from the leading causes of home fires, which include cooking and heating and electricals. With that, and the cooperation of the Fire Department and our citizens, hopefully this awareness and the designation of this week will turn on light bulbs in our heads and recognize that with a little prevention, we can save lives and properties. Chief, thank you for your efforts. Phil, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Oh, no, I think that's for information's sake. Stephanie, we don't need to vote any... That ought to just for information purposes. I don't ever... We never do vote on that, but I recall. Anybody recalls differently, fine. Let's see...
The mayor has to be filed with the city clerk.
It is.
And I think I feel comfortable with that, a motion to accept and file. We did receive...
Second.
Second.
We want to make you comfortable, Alderman. So with that...
Very denied.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's go to Old Business.
Resolution 01-125, Mayor Hayes.
Let me call it.
This is a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to enter into an amended lease agreement with Prince Spectrum Realty Company, LP, regarding the expansion of the existing cell tower site located at 3415 Magnolia Street.
I think there were some legal questions. I understand most of those have been resolved, perhaps answered. If not, could I get a motion so we could get it on the floor?
I move for adoption, Matt, and there's an amendment.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I got a second.
Motion made and seconded. Alderman Gibson, what's your amendment?
The amendment is the agreement... Amendment to the PCS site agreement, and I believe Mr. City Attorney has gone through this. It changes the dollar amount to $200 per month or $2,400 a year instead of 50 that was originally on there, and some small changes in the area that they were going to do.
City Attorney?
Yes, that's correct. The only changes is in the resolution. Instead of 223 square feet, it should be 240. And also, there's the new amendment that's, I believe, been circulated, which represents the new contract and the new description of the area.
So Alderman Gibson's amendment is by adding the addition...
Square... Change in the square footage. And amending the square footage. That's right.
Amending the square footage in the original resolution and then attaching this recital. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll hear that as a motion to amend. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Right.
Made and seconded on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Will we adopt as amended? Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
Resolution 01-141, Alderman Vestal.
Hold it, please.
Next item is Ordinance 01-65, Alderman Height, read two times on August 27, and return to the corner.
We're going to call that one tonight. Have we read that? We read it twice, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
Got to read it.
This is an ordinance prohibiting the parking of dump trucks in residential zones, amending Ordinance Number 7353 in Municipal Code Section 102-110, third and final reading.
What's your pleasure? Go ahead and move for adoption.
I'd like to... But we want to amend it also. But I'll move for adoption, and we also want... To the Attorney?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Now, Alderman Height?
We're going to amend this. But we want to change the language in it slightly.
Yeah, actually, I believe what we did is we filed a whole new ordinance that will come up in new business. So my advice would be to just withdraw this, and then it'll be considered as a new ordinance.
This is...
We just filed it as a new ordinance.
We didn't hear your motion, your second, Alderman Witcher, and what we really heard Alderman Height say was he wanted it withdrawn. Is that correct?
Exactly.
All right.
And then we'll get... The new one's coming up in new business tonight.
That's right.
All right.
The new one is 01-0172. Actually, oh, 0172.
Thank you.
Next item?
Ordinance 01-67, Mayor Hayes.
I want to hold that.
Ordinance 01-70, Alderman Witcher.
Hold please.
Okay. New business, Resolution 01-142, Mayor Hayes, Alderman...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mayor Hayes, Alderman Gibson, Yildin, Thomas, Dobins, Vestal, Berry, Witcher, and Height.
I may say adoption.
We want it called.
Call it, Alderman.
We want it called, and then Alderman, Thomas Moos, for adoption. So go ahead and read it, please.
This is a resolution condemning the attacks against the New York World Trade Center Towers and the Pentagon, expressing condolences to the victims and their families, saluting the bravery of countless firefighters, police officers, members of our military, rescue workers, and volunteers, expressing complete support to our Commander in Chief and our armed forces as our country prepares to respond to said attacks.
Alderman, Thomas Moos, there's a second?
Second.
Let me just say in the discussion that I had an opportunity to go to New York this past week and was able to travel to where this event took place. And it is beyond description of what one sees when you're there. The devastation, the destruction, not only of the World Trade Center and its facilities, but almost all of the buildings within sight of that location experienced some degree of destruction, some of which will have to be razed. But that doesn't come close to talking about the untold death and injury that occurred. There are over 6,000 people that are missing and very well presumed dead. The heroism of those that were there, and certainly the courageousness of all of those thousands of people who are up there now. There were hundreds of people who were digging through and trying to still yet rescue people. I know I had a chance to talk to the Chief of Police. There's 4,000... No, excuse me, 40,000 members of the New York Police Department, and, you know, the Chief was, even in light of all the pessimism, was talking about how there were food courts that were at the bottom of seven stories below ground level, and that they still held out hope that there may be someone that might be in one of those pockets. While I was there, the, I believe, was the FBI agent, a... Several men carried by a corpse that was draped in a coffin, and you can't... You just can't describe those kinds of things, you know, without having been there. And so I, you know, I certainly, you know, caution all of us that, you know, that we are in a different country than we were in before September 11 occurred. The, you know, the path is one that... Is one that we've never embarked on before, and yet I think all of us recognize that, you know, that in this war, the front lines may be our own front door. And that's why that, you know, this city has taken and will continue to take very strong steps toward doing all we can to make sure that our front door and our back door is as vigilantly guarded and as many reasonable steps as we can. But having said that, I also want to tell everyone that we need to go about our lives, and we need to do what many are saying, and that is, you know, go back to our stores, go back to our vacations, go back to trying to be as normal as we can, because, you know, if there's any way that victory will be had by those who perpetrated this is if they caused us to unlawfully not exercise many of the freedoms that we've had. And I ask us all to be vigilant and work together like we've done more and more on an increasing basis as we face a new kind of life. With that, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 01-143, Mayor Hayes.
Next, please call it.
This is a resolution accepting the low bid of Nathaniel Sein Construction Company for the installation of five speed humps and appropriating funds.
I move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
No.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
No.
The vote is five to two.
Motion is adopted. Next item?
Resolution 01-144, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the low bid of Lafferty Holling for the demolition and site clearance of certain condemned property.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 01-145, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Need to get a motion, and then I'm going to call a hearing, and then I'll recognize Alderman Dobins.
I'll move.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Alderman Dobins, you want to speak before I call a hearing?
Well, yes.
All right.
Just wanted to ask if there's an opportunity to allow the person to make significant contact with our code enforcement before we act on this.
Mr. Sykes, are you out there?
Yes.
Can you come to the microphone and tell me a little bit about this property?
Of course. We initially started working on it in January 2001. Ms. Lawson is the overseer of this house. We just condemned one piece of her property not too long ago. You know, working on one, and now this one's up, so it seems there's some levity there to finish one or not. But, of course, this is not in my ward. This is in Ward 1, so certainly going to yield to those, Alderman.
You don't want to yield to them. Tear it down.
You know, help us out. We, you know, if it's something that is, I mean, usually, when we get it to this point, you know, we try to give as much latitude. I know, Mr. Sykes, under my instructions, is to give every reasonable opportunity before we get it up here to bring it to y'all. You know, out of courtesy to a council member, if they make that request, I'll hold off on one council meeting. If a council member requests it, I'll make a regular practice of that. But if no significant comfort level has been arrived at by Mr. Sykes, and it's my intent to call it at the next council meeting, so, you know, you can tell that's your request. You know, that property owner's got two weeks to get him comfort level that we won't call at the next council meeting.
Well, that's fine. I believe they understand that, and I appreciate that, Lefty.
With that request, I'll hold it for two weeks, and, Mr. Sykes, you understand, unless you get comfortable, we're going to call it, so the property owner has got a benchmark to crawl over with you.
I have one question. This one, should we hold a public hearing?
Yeah, if anybody's here, I'd still give them an opportunity to speak, and they normally notify them if they're here, then they know it's being continued.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate that. With that, let me call a public hearing on 605 East 16th. Is there anyone here that wants to address that property? 605 East 16th. I'll adjourn that public hearing, ask our City Clerk to call roll, not to call roll, to call the next item.
Resolution 01-146, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the low bid of blank for the installation at the North Little Rock Airport, appropriating matching funds on a 75-25 state-to-local match and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion, and then our City Attorney has an amount? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion made and seconded. What's the amount we want to put in?
Yes, there's a couple items. Is the low bid was Southwest Fence, and the total bid was $109,000, $109,674.55. And then that needs to be reflected in Section 1. What's different, the airport has informed me that we will need to appropriate the entire $109,000, and the state will reimburse us the $75,000 upon its completion. So here's how the new Section 2 should read, that $109,674.55 is hereby appropriated from the general fund, which will be the city's 25% match in a 70-25 state-to-local match, with $75,000 being reimbursed from the state for a total city expenditure of
Would one council member care to make that amendment?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, that it be amended in accordance with the City Attorney's recommendation. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Whitby on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
On the motion to adopt is amended.
Gibson?
Well, I had a question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry if I might. Is there any money left in the 2,000 capital improvement account, the money that was originally scheduled to go to the library slash senior center, and we moved that project over to the bond issue, and then you have the fire trucks coming out of there? Is there any funds left in that sufficient to cover this?
Stephanie's shaking her head no.
He's as bad as Mr. Sisson.
If you want to come to the microphone, please, Stephanie.
We have spent $300,000, and the other $700,000 went to the fire truck.
Meant to ask you that question today. I'm sorry. Thank you. So I'm ready to vote now. I'm sorry.
On the... You're calling the roll, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Press to ordinances.
Let's go to the first one.
Ordinance 01-71, Mayor Hayes.
I might remind that this was adopted by a voice vote at the last council meeting. Could you please read it?
This is an ordinance amended 2001 budget ordinance by moving $700,000 from the senior citizen library line item to the fire truck line item, accepting the bid of purest manufacturing for the purchase of a purest fire truck and appropriating $674,356 for said purchase. First reading.
And without objection, Alderman Yildin would like to join in sponsoring that legislation.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amended 2001 budget ordinance by moving $700,000 from the senior citizen's library line item to the fire truck line item, accepting the bid of purest manufacturing for the purchase of a purest fire truck and appropriating $674,356 for said purchase. Second reading.
Mr. Ben Rule, place your ordinance on his third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amended 2001 budget ordinance by moving $700,000 from the senior citizen's library line item to the fire truck line item, accepting the bid of purest manufacturing for purchase of a purest fire truck and appropriating $674,356 for said purchase. Third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item is Ordinance 01-72, Alderman Height.
Call it, please.
This is an order restricting the parking and storage of heavy commercial vehicles in residential areas. First reading.
Move to spend rules, replace it on the second reading.
Second. There's some part we need to discuss in the amendment.
Right.
On the motion to spend the rules?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
The vote is six to seven.
An ordinance restricting the parking and storage of heavy commercial vehicles in residential areas. Second reading.
Ben Rule, place your ordinance on his third reading.
Second.
Second, Dan.
Motion made and seconded, and then we'll discuss. On the motion to spend the rules?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance restricting the parking and storage of heavy commercial vehicles in residential areas. Third and final reading.
All right, Alderman Gibson?
I discussed today with the City Attorney the possibility. I'm concerned that this probably takes care of the parking on property, but doesn't take care of the parking on the streets in those same neighborhoods, and I asked him to draft an amendment to take care of that.
Mr. City Attorney, what's your recommendation?
Yes, I actually have two. Do we want to ban them on any streets or just areas?
Well, the R1, 2, 3, 4, 5 area.
All right, I have two of them. Then my recommendation would be at the end of Paragraph A, remove the period and add the following, or upon any street adjacent to properties zoned R1, R2, R3, R4, or R5.
I would assume that you might accept any public street.
Yes.
Yeah. Upon any public street.
I have a question.
Well, whoa, whoa. Because I need to discuss that word.
Okay. Alderman?
We have gated communities within the city, which are not public streets.
I recognize that. I leave that up to you. I think that we need to at least recognize that issue. I mean, I would assume a gated community could keep that...
I would assume they would have their own restrictions to do so.
Who places gated communities themselves?
Well, but they police it, but they have to go file the... You can't call a code officer and have them go move it. You know, they don't get a ticket. They have to go to... If I understand, it's bill of assurances, and you go to court to have that vehicle removed. It's not a good process to go through.
I wonder if we have any gated communities that have this problem in?
Well, we've got... I know Chimney Rock is the entrance to Sherwood. Part of it's in North Little Rock, so the answer to that is yes.
But, I mean, do we have any occurrences of people parking dump trucks and...
The other, the other thing, too, is on, on amendment, I wanted, I don't wanna be a parking on the street. One reason is that we-
Hold on a second, just a second, Alderman. Have, have we got a motion for that amendment?
I make that motion for that.
Okay. That, that motion is made with or without the word "public"?
Without the word "public".
All right, uh, it's, it's made without the word "public", and is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, now, now we're in discussion. Alderman Hite?
Well, the, the intent of this ordinance was to prohibit them from parking on, not only on the street, but in front of the building line, which I feel like that, that, that terminology needs to be included in this, uh, in this ordinance, which-
It is.
It's, it, it is in there?
It is. His amendment simply adds public, or simply adds streets to, uh, your prohibition of front yards.
I'm, I'm for that. Simple because emergency vehicles driving down a street, uh, don't need to negotiate, uh, heavy equipment and dump trucks are being parked on the street. From, you know, from that standpoint of view, I'm, I'm in favor of adding that street language.
There is many more than just a few gated communities that have, I'm sorry, Mayor, ma'am.
That's all right. Go ahead.
There are many areas that have streets that are not public streets. Uh, McCain Park Apartments has streets that are not public streets. Uh, the Lakewood Apartments off of North Hills has, has streets that are not public streets.
All right, on the, on the amendment, Alderman Thomas?
Well, I guess what right do we have to tell somebody who has a private street what they can do with it, what they can't do with it?
In a residential area, it's affected, it's the same reason we tell them they have to fix a broken sewer line. I mean, it's a public nuisance. You can't get, you can't get a, a, a vehicle down through there, and we're not talking about a commercial industrial areas. We're talking about residential areas, and that they, uh, they have to park them behind the building line and not on the street.
Well, and they call the fire department. Our fire department has to get there.
True. Has to get there. We, uh, probably one of the worst instances we've ever had happened on the entrance to Shady Valley, and the fact that they end up having to just back the truck back and forth to get around some vehicles that are there. It's not easy to plow them down. Uh, obviously, the $674,000 fire truck, I hope we don't plow them down, but, uh, you, you have quite an issue there with that stuff on the street. I'm sorry.
All right, uh, Alderman, uh, Thomas, are you finished?
No.
Uh, Alderman Yilding, and then a Hite.
Yeah, it's gonna be bad enough having to go over that speed bump with that $674,000, much less go around dump trucks. I'm for what you're doing.
I understand. Thank you. I, yeah, and I want, Alderman Thomas, now, this is, doesn't include the normal business hours, the normal business activities. It's only, uh, uh, after hours at night, um, where people are parking them and storing them on the streets and in front of the building lines.
'Cause I was comfortable with the pu- with the public, but I don't know if I'm comfortable yet with, uh, just any street.
All right, we're on the amendment that adds Alderman Gibson's, uh, amendment essentially adding, uh, public, uh, essentially adding streets. Uh, on the amendment, uh, Ms. Whitby?
Well, let, I want a clarification. When you say "street", are we still?
In our way, in ours?
In our?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
1, 2, 3, "street", whether it's public or private.
Right. On the amendment, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Amendment is six to one.
Uh, motion to adopt is amended.
So moved.
Begging. Any discussion?
Was there another amendment?
No, the only, the only thing I was making sure was that the wordage in there in front of the building line was there.
Yes, sir. Our city attorney's nodding. All right, motion, did I hear a motion on to adopt is amended?
Yes, sir.
And, and did I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Now, do I hear some vote, miss, voting, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Uh, no.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Six to one on the emergency.
Question is, I'd like to amend the emergency clause for it to be effective in November 1, 2001.
On a motion to amend the emergency clause, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, do I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause as amended?
So moved.
And there is a motion made and seconded. On the emergency clause as amended, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes from your business.
Thank you very much. Uh, before I, before I, uh, turn over to any council member and open up the public comment, I just wanna share with, uh, with those here, uh, that our finance director, uh, Bob Sisson, uh, went back into the hospital, uh, yesterday, and, uh, had, uh, several procedures today, uh, in relation, uh, to, uh, to his condition, and, uh, he, uh, is, uh, is looking at perhaps having, uh, an extended stay of, uh, certainly perhaps the remainder of this week, uh, and into next week, uh, in, uh, in, uh, in, in receiving treatment on, on his condition. He's, uh, he's, uh, we, uh, we certainly wish him the best. I know he and Connie may be watching us tonight. Uh, he, uh, was supposed to finish up a procedure. They were doing some testing, uh, and, uh, and we know that, uh, that they know, that our thoughts and prayers are with him. We know that it won't be too long before he's, uh, back in here letting us know that we're, uh, bumping budgets and telling our department heads, uh, that, uh, as he did, uh, Stephanie Friday, I think he conveyed a message that, you know, we don't need to go over, at least, uh, that was conveyed in staff meeting this morning, that we don't need to go over our budgets for the remainder of the year. So, Bob, uh, you know, if you and, you and Connie are up there watching, uh, again, our, our, our thoughts and prayers are with, uh, all of you and your family, and, and we know it won't be too many days before you're, you're back here giving us, uh, good, sound financial guidance and wisdom, and we'll hold the fort down the best we can, uh, in the meantime. Uh, with that, any council member?
I guess I need to ask where are we? Many of the employees are quite concerned over our survey. Where are we on getting that survey completed, so that we know how?
Uh, good question. Uh, of course, Bob and, uh, and, uh, and the personnel department are the ones that, you know, are keeping up with that. I, I guess I'll have to find out an answer and get it to you. Right now, I don't see anybody walking to the microphone of, of department heads that are here, so I'll have to find out.
Would it be proper then to check with Laura and see if we could get something from her?
Sure. Uh, I'll, I'll find out and try to get you, uh, an answer tomorrow, where we are on that. Any other comments, questions? Uh, public comment section's open. Uh, anyone care to address the council? Yes, sir.
I'm Phil Pounders. I'm the captain on North Rock Fire Department. I am also president of the Firefighters Labor Association, and on behalf of Local 35, and on behalf of the chief and the fire administration, I would like to publicly thank the citizens of North Little Rock and our surrounding community for assisting us with our fundraising efforts. Uh, we collected 55, over $55,000, which will go toward the families of the fallen firefighters in New York. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you to our citizens. You've supported us well, and we really appreciate it.
Well, let, let us return the thanks to you, Phil, and the members of, uh, of our fire department. I know I had a chance, uh, to, to go out, uh, the, on one of the several days that, uh, you and, uh, and fellow members of the union, uh, as, as well as perhaps some in the administration stood out and, uh, and, and with your boots. I know you got a $20 bill from me, and, uh, and, and obviously you got a lot, uh, a lot of money from a lot of folks. Uh, again, it speaks well, uh, for this community, but it also speaks well for the leadership that you and, uh, and the members of North Rock Fire Department showed in giving us a chance to do something. Uh, thank you very much. Bobby?
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Bobby Taylor. Uh, to the council members and to the mayor. I guess y'all know by now, when I come up here, there's something that's not, that I'm not pleased with. And I'm gonna start off, I have talked to you, Mayor, about this before, and I've worked with the police, and the police has done everything that they can. These prostitutes in Rose City, they'll even walk out in the street and undress in front of you. When they take them to jail, uh, I don't know, I've told who the judge was, but he'll fine them $100, and they're back on the street before the policeman gets the paperwork done. That is not right. It's sickening, and it's disgusting. You can't even go into McDonald's in Protho Junction to get a hamburger without one of them being dropped off and somebody else picking her up. I want y'all, if it's possible, to talk to the judge and see if we can't get something like a $1,000 fine, and if that, if we're caught back in the same place again, that they get a little jail time. These people out there that come to the, to the Rose City Crime Watch, and this is the main thing on their mind, is this. They're sick of it, and I would appreciate it if y'all could do something about it. And the next thing is this $100,000 that was given to Little Rock. I have been taught all of my life that you take care of your own family, and then if you have anything left, then you give it to whoever, 'cause it don't matter. But we got employees, the, the firemen, the city police, the linemen, the people that rides the garbage trucks when it's cold, raining, it don't matter what. All of them could have used just a little bit of this money. And I, like I said, I'm, I'm, of course, the, the papers stated that your hide and job was on the line over that, and everybody that I have talked to said they're unhappy. They didn't know why that it was done with, uh, watching the council meeting and, and seeing these linemen here asking for money, and then the, the Aldermen's got a pretty good race, and they didn't get what they thought they should have had. Uh... The jails are closed from time to time because we don't have the funds to, uh, have people to watch the prisoners while they're in there. Some of that money could have been, there's several different places that that money could have been used. Now, this is, back a little bit later about the fireworks, I was told, I talked to JP, I talked to two JPs. One of them's in Rose City. I talked to that JP, and they told me that there was no way that they was gonna help me in Corum Court. There was a lot of other things that was gonna be put in there before that was. The other JP said he wouldn't cross the line because that wasn't, wasn't his job. It belonged to the other one. So, I, I don't know, I don't understand that, and nobody yet has told me how and what I needed to do to get into the Corum Court to talk to them about what I have talked to y'all about. Mayor, your support comes from all of North Little Rock, not just part of it, down here around this Old Hotel Arena. It looks good. I'm proud of it, but we're also proud of Rose City, like other parts of the city is. I am a member of five different organizations, and I talk to people all over North Little Rock, and they tell me the problems and stuff that they're having, which is, uh, not, nothing like what we're having in Rose City. Now then, I wanna talk to you about a, a trailer. Y'all may think I've got a grudge, but I don't. This happened about 15 years ago. No, it happened about 20 years ago. I come to the planning commission with it drawed up and asked them, it was a hardship case, and I know y'all know what that is. That just lasts for a while, and asked them if I could put a trailer on a side lot for a person that didn't have no place to stay. And this trailer was coming from a person, friend of mine, that used it in deer camp. And this trailer was only gonna be there four to five months till this person got up on her feet, and they told me there is no way that I could do that. This other trailer went in on Coral Street. That trailer is still there. I asked them about two or three weeks later if I could turn part of a building that I have at the back, behind my house.